Well, it's funny, about the time we hit Little Pet Slumber City, we've been on with Indianapolis A T C and then they would move us over to Lexington.
Good morning. We will call this meeting of the Bull County Fiscal Court to order on November 25th, 2025 at 9:00 a.m. Madam Clerk, do we have a quorum and has this meeting been properly advertised?
Yes.
All right. Welcome guests. I will ask you all to please silence your phones. If you have a phone on or in your pocket, if you all could silence those, please, so that they do not disrupt the meeting. First item on the agenda is invocation by Master Gay.
Thank you Judge. Before we pray, I do want to, as we enter the holiday seasons with this week of Thanksgiving, that we be mindful of those that have missing empty chairs around the table this year. We be mindful of those that don't have a table to sit around this time of year and those that don't have a house to sit in this time of year. Gracious Heavenly Father, accept our thanks and praise for all that you have done for us. We thank you for the splendor of your creation, the beauty of this world, and the wonder of life. We are especially grateful for your son, Jesus Christ, for the truth of his word, the example of his life, and his victory over death. Grant us your spirit that we may always give thanks to you in all things. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Master Gay. All right, next, we have our pledge of allegiance and we have a special guest, Josh Moss. He is from Woodland Elementary and in the fifth grade, and his parents are Kirsten and Ben Moss. All right, Josh, if you will stand up and the rest of the group will stand. We will follow Josh in the pledge of allegiance right here to the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Josh. Good job. Yeah, good job. If you get for you, you will come over here and Miss Julie's going to take our picture. How about that? And you hold that side and I'll hold this side.
Ready?
Mom did. There you go. Thank you. And thank you so much for being here today.
Judge, Mom must take.
Mom, okay. Mom wants to take a picture too. So you're famous.
Thank you.
All right. Now you can stay and be entertained, or you can go back to school and learn something.
Go back to school.
Okay. Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Okay, prior meeting minutes, we have minutes from the November 10th meeting. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Master Gay, second by Master Bodner, any discussion on the minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor approving the minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed nay? Motion carries. Minutes are approved. Okay, next, we have budget transfers. Ms. Shannon.
I have budget transfers in the amount of $253,405.71.
Okay. Motion to approve budget transfers?
Make a motion. Second.
Master Cohen, second by Master Sleeper, is there any discussion on the budget transfers? All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed nay? Motion carries. Now we'll have cash transfers.
I have a cash transfer from the interest-bearing account to the general fund for $500,000.
Make a motion to approve.
From the general fund to the jail for $50,000. From general fund to EMS, $175,000. And general fund to fleet for $10,000.
All right, so we have a motion by Master Cohen to approve all of the cash transfers.
All the ones listed in our packet.
All the ones listed in our packet. Second by Master Harmon, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed nay? Motion passes. Thank you, Ms. Shannon. All right, next is our bills and Ms. Elena.
Good morning.
Good morning.
All right, your bill packet today totals $202,139.98. That's all I got for you.
No add-ons?
Nothing.
All right. Good deal.
Move if we pay the bills as presented.
Have a motion by Master Gay, a second by Master Cohen to pay the bills as presented. Any discussion on the bills? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed nay? Motion carries. Thank you ma'am.
Thank you.
And would you have Ms. Avery come in with her parents, Avery Long, please? Come on in. Come on in. Mom, Dad coming down? All right, come on in. That's awesome. Okay, so you all have, some of you all have met Avery, Avery Long. She is seventh grader at Bait Middle School, and she entered the KCO art contest and she won second place. And so I wanted Avery to come. She was recognized at the KCO conference and got to go up on stage and receive a certificate. But Avery, I wanted you to come and I wanted the Fiscal Court to provide you with a certificate of recognition. It's in honor of your outstanding achievement in earning second place in the 2025 KCO art contest. The Bull County Fiscal Court proudly recognizes your creativity, your talent, and your dedication. Your artwork reflects exceptional skill and provides great pride to Bull County.
And Judge, all 120 counties, how many entries do I record?
Now, I don't remember that.
Hundreds, hundreds.
This is a picture that she drew to represent Bull County. And she said that this reminds her of a country road, traveling down a country road and looking at the scenery in the country. And I thought she did an outstanding job. So Avery, if you will come over here, we'll get your picture and I'm going to issue this colorful art certificate. How you like that?
Do you remember how long it took her to do that artwork?
How long?
Like two hours.
Two hours? Yeah. So that's good. Congratulations, honey. Thank you, Mom and Dad. Appreciate y'all bringing it.
And Avery, your place at the conference won a candle.
Yeah, I need to get with you.
And I've got to get you your candle. So you've got a nice little candle.
And you must have gotten your talent from your mom.
You all have a happy Thanksgiving. Great day. Thank you. Yeah. That's awesome.
Do we have that mounted up here in the courtroom, if I change?
No, but we should. We should. Get a picture of that. Come in, come in, come in. Okay, we've got some introductions of new employees and the first one, Jackie has brought in a new.
Yes, we finally have a new employee for the tax office. This is Trish Dunbar.
Nice to meet you.
And just want to introduce her to you all.
Okay. Welcome, Trish.
Thank you. She's a wonderful addition.
We know you're finally happy, we know you're happy to finally have someone. Yes.
Yes, very much. Happy to be here.
All right, great. Well, thank you. You all have a good day. And then we've got animal control. Are they up there? All right, we've got a new animal control employee.
Got a new outreach coordinator, community outreach coordinator, Alexandria Young. She just started last week. It was, yeah. So she's already hitting the ground running. Got a cat spayed already. We're going to make a post of that with their whole cat, so.
That's awesome. Okay, and you'll be providing like social media and different things, you know, for people to know what's going on? Yeah, at the animal control.
She'll be updating everybody on what's going on.
Good deal. All right, and I think you're part vet tech as well, so you'll be able to help with medications?
Oh, wait a minute.
That's what I thought. All right, well, welcome to the team. We're proud to have you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thanks a lot. And then we've got Sheriff's Department.
Come on, Steve, keep going. He's our doorkeeper.
You got an introduction, boss? Can we, can we, hey, Steve, let's bump him down. Yeah, let's bump him down. Sheriff's actually at an elementary school reading to kids, and so he wants to come back and.
Okay. All right. I wouldn't worry that. Well, here comes the man, the miss, and the legend.
Some new employees, Will?
No, but he should be.
Yeah, so Sheriff had to cut out early on our committee meeting this morning because he needed to go over and.
Okay, well, that's fine. Pick him up when he comes back in. All right. Stay in the room only, guys. But you're welcome to stay in. All right, next up, Harm Reduction Homeless Coordinator, Bryce Gibson. Welcome.
Morning.
Morning.
All right, so I'll give you all a few numbers. So I started September 1st. Since then, I've given out 156 meal kits. Those meal kits consist about three to four meals in each one. So you'll do the math on that. It's pretty good. And so what I've really come to talk about was the hotel vouchers that we're running right now. They'll go into effect December 1st and all this stuff through the Bull County Homeless Coalition, which was started out of Steve Sleeper's homeless task force. So they're going to start on December the 1st and they're going to run, we're going to try to run through March 31st. There's a temperature activator on them of 28 degrees, a high of 28 degrees. The other thing is that if the warming centers are open, the nights that they are open, the vouchers will not be available that evening, evenings. So in doing all this, like to get a hotel voucher, you're going to have to come in and you're going to have to do an intake, basically. It's going to be 43 questions. That way that we can start collecting the data that we need to be able to track all this stuff. You know, we'll be able to get some root and causes to the reasons why some of these individuals are homeless. And it will just help us kind of better understand everything that we're trying to do, like the big scheme of everything. So it's Bull County residents only. Something else, we're actively still fundraising for this. The Health Department had funds the last two years of approximately $35,000 a year. Hudson Ellis gave us 17.5. So that's another reason why I think the criterias are lower than what they have been in the years past because we're working on half the budget. And at $60 a night, this doesn't include pet fees, which there's a $10 pet fee and we all know that some of these individuals have pets. It's about 291 rooms and I believe that we used roughly 450 rooms over the last two years. So, and that's also at $70 a night, that's the cheapest that I can find it. And that's through one hotel provider. I would say that I'm going to have to end up using another hotel provider also, which is going to be probably close to $100 a night. I think they're around between 80 and 90. But I just wanted you all to know that, you know, this is kind of some of the stuff that we're doing right now. I hope that we find some type of answer for some of this stuff. I know we're not going to solve the problem. I know that. Another thing is that we got a move-in date for this RCC, which is a recovery community center. The state awarded three grants to health departments and we received one of those. We were one of the three counties that got the grant. And move-in date's December the 2nd. We'll come back after the 1st of the year. It's going to be called The Bridge. And I've already lined up, like I'll have, I'll have case manager in there once a week to be able to help clients, you know. Our connector, Julia Turpin, she will be in there at least once a month to be able to sign people up for insurance. Because we haven't, what we're trying to do is just bring people in and we're trying to connect all these services. And if we have one centralized location, then it's easier for everybody to get there. We found an office space right on Fourth Street. It's actually right across from the Health Department except on Fourth Street. So we're all getting very centralized in our locations, which I think will be of big, big help.
In close proximity.
Yes.
So how many vouchers have you gotten donations for so far?
Well, we've gotten 17.5, so if you figure them up.
17.5?
Yeah, if you figure 17.5 up, it's $60, which is not, which isn't right, really.
Yeah.
It's approximately 291 rooms. So I really think once you really do the math on it and you start figuring in the pets and things like that, you're going to probably bump it down to about 250, maybe 260. Then you've got to factor in, well, if this person's banned from this hotel, because I do have some that are banned from some certain hotels, then I can take them to another place and they can get a room there and that room's probably going to be 80, 90, maybe $100 for that night.
Yeah, it's my understanding that the Health Department can't contribute this year. Is that right?
No. No. They cannot. So through the homeless coalition, they're doing a, they're calling it Adopt-A-Mon, but it's really about like 10 nights. So that's going through the homeless coalition in a united way. I think that First Christian Church has stepped up and covered at least one month.
Okay.
But we're still actively, you know, looking for money to be able to sign up, finish up the year. Plus, like, you know, that little cold stretch that we just had, I didn't open them because I was scared to open them because I don't want to run out in the middle of February. You know, if we hit a real, real bad patch, you know, and I run out of funds in the middle of February, then I'm out of funds.
Yeah.
We could have, like 14 years ago, the vortex that came in and, I mean, the ice was all over the county.
Yeah.
Temperature plummeted. They could be in there for days.
Yeah, that's right. And aren't they calling for a really rough year this year? I think the forecast is supposed to be really cold this year, so.
This week?
Yeah.
Coming in, it's going to start chance of snow next week, so. Judge, I've been working with Bryce a lot, trying to find different ways to fund this other half. And I didn't know if there's a possible way that if the county could possibly not just give the funds, but act as a resource that if needed, you know, we could bridge that gap a little bit, possibly work with the city to see if they could kind of bridge it until he can find some of those resources. I mean, he's only been doing this since September, so. He's running ragged, you know, he's outside of donating food everywhere and doing everything else. He's got this on his plate as well. And so I don't know if maybe we can work with Shannon to see if we have, you know, our half would be, you know, just under $8,800 that we could possibly act as a resource for them and if they didn't find anything else or just give a full commitment, I don't know what the court wants to do.
Yeah. I think, excuse me.
No, go ahead. I was going to say, open up your comment.
I think that we don't, we forget like the good stories that come out of people reaching out and pulling these people together. They have issues, they're homeless, but we have one that's a published poet, remember?
Right.
She come in because somebody reached out and they pulled her out of her little tent behind one of the stores. And my daughter was telling about a family that was, she and, we had some food at the church and none of the homeless came in, but we didn't think about it. They don't want to leave their home of a night because somebody might take it, their little tent. So Wes and Jennifer took it out, took the food to them. Well, one of those families now has a full-time job, the family, and they have their children in the home. And it's those little small things that we keep reaching out, reaching out, and it doesn't work every time. But the ones that do work, it makes you feel good that we're doing the right thing. And it's kind of hard sometimes to keep helping the same people over time, but we have to reach them. We have to reach them where they are.
There was unfortunately the young gentleman that lost his life at East Main, you know, during the fire in his tent. And we also have to realize that, you know, a lot of times when it gets really cold, they'll do what they have to do and they'll go find them at the jail because they needed to get out of the cold. So one way or another, we're probably going to end up having to house them somehow. And so if you can kind of keep them out of jail, that would probably be a much better, better option.
Here's something else that really surprised me, because I'm doing, I'm doing street outreach a couple of times a week. And when I say that, I'm going into encampments and I'm visiting people in tents, not people in cars and things like that. The people who are really living in tents, over half of them have jobs. Want to draw this building check and they just can't put everything together, no matter what the problem is. I mean, it's still their, you know, still a problem. And if we can get them in, that's another thing about this RCC, if we can get them in and start offering them some services, then maybe we can make a difference. Diana's a prime example of what can happen when a community will come together and provide good resources like we do in Bull County and they get offered to her. And you surround someone with the right people, of what can happen. She's in a one-bedroom apartment of her own right now.
Yeah. That's awesome. That's awesome.
It's great. It's great.
We've seen the success of what you started at Shepherd's House when you opened up meals and showers to homeless. And so a lot of them, you know, very much trust you as well, which is why you're perfect for this role. Because, you know, you've bridged that gap, so.
I'd like to see the county, I mean, be able to commit some funds. I don't know how much funds because I'd also like for maybe area churches to step up and commit funds to this as well. And I know you mentioned one that had already given a donation, but, and I'm sure you're probably reaching out to them in the area and in the community, that you're already reaching out to them. But I'd like to see, you know, churches step up and commit some funding toward this as well. But if there's a motion to be made.
Yeah, I'll make one in a second, but I think his role was the missing piece and Steve was to speak for your group. But we do have a lot of churches that do, you know, give a lot and try to help in lots of ways. But you need a coordinator to say, well, this is, all the stuff that you're doing is good. But if we can kind of focus and have a focus on that and really put those funds together for a more useful purpose, then things will work out better and you're, and that helps out. You're spending less money doing it. But I do know, speaking to, you know, one foundation I particularly, you know, deal with, you know, they also would like to see, you know, some county and city input as well. You know, and so I think that this is kind of part of that piece too.
Yeah, I agree with all of that. My wife served for 14 years as a church secretary. And so, and I'm sure it's true for all church secretaries throughout the community, at least churches that have full-time staff, but there wasn't a day that went by that she didn't have at least one, if not multiple, request. And it's helpful to everybody if they have a person to refer to and for each, for all the churches to consolidate the resources so that, you know, you're not going to this church and then going to that church and going around town. It just helps the overall structure of the system if there is that system in place, so.
A lot of churches will have big drives for certain times of the year.
Oh, yeah.
Home assistance just isn't certain times of the year. It's all year.
All year long. Yeah.
So, I mean, I'll make a motion that we commit $8,800 to reimburse. I'm not wanting to just give you $800, but as a resource, you can invoice us for services towards the hotel vouchers to help place more people in hotels as needed throughout the winter. The one part that you left out was right now, the kicker is 28 degrees, but if we can get you up to the 35,000, the kicker is 32 degrees. And so, you know, that four degrees makes a lot of difference. I mean, honestly, 32 is cold.
Yeah. Let's hit 28 because of funding, you know, because I'm scared to.
Okay, before we even have any more discussion, let's get a second on the motion. Master Sleeper. Okay, now you all go ahead and discuss all you want to.
Yeah, those, that one tent with the family, they had three children in a tent, you know, and it was really cold out. You know, I thought, oh, what's happening in our county? So this is very needed.
I once worked at Lexington Restaurant when I was in graduate school. And sad to say, but the owner hired an alcoholic. And that fellow would do a lot of work. He was watched all the time, of course. But he would take out trash, he would clean up the parking lot if there was snow on the ground. Is there any way that with some you'd meet and know and trust that you can negotiate with that hotel manager to subsidize what we're able to help with? You, more than us, with the money we're giving you, where that manager might agree that, well, yeah, Charlie's trustworthy. I've seen him in the lobby and I'll offset his room by half or about third or something like that.
I think that, I think they've given us probably, as she was writing, that they're going to give us. Here's another thing that I don't think's really viable right now is that after we kind of get this RCC developed, then you can start, when you're getting those in, you start rewarding, you know, making appointments or those types of things with some stuff like that, some incentive-based stuff. I don't think the hotels are going to give us any more.
But you're talking about other workplaces that you're, okay.
But, and that'll come as, that'll come down the road really, really, really early in this whole deal. Like, we haven't even got that office open yet. And I think that you'll start seeing a lot of things come out of that, just because you're putting, you're putting me and the Harm Reduction Program all in one building. And, you know, Brent told you all a couple of weeks ago, you know, the Harm Reduction stuff is not what we think of. You know what I'm saying? Like, it's not what it started out being. And you got 40% of the visits that are coming in there that have nothing to do with the SSP program. I mean, that's huge. It's huge. So they'll be also coming in to our new office and that's why we're trying to get all the community involved as far as the case management side of things. And as far as like insurance, you know, everybody's got to have health insurance. That's what the connector does. All those little things. And then you can start saying, well, if you're going to come in and do this, then we'll make sure that this works out because we'll have more community partners six months from now to be able to do some things like what you're talking about.
Thank you.
All right. Any other discussion on setting aside $8,800 to help with the other half of the costs for hotel vouchers? Thank you.
Shannon, where does that come from?
We have a little extra because we didn't, we budgeted for S D loan or rent payments and we're not going to do that, so we have extra in there.
Good.
And I would just add that I would think this part of your motion, that this is for this budget year.
Current budget year. And you will invoice us and it'll be a pay you back.
Unless you want it for next winter. Unless you want it for next winter.
We'll get there. We'll get there in a few months.
We'll reimburse as needed.
Yes.
Yeah.
All right.
As you provide. All right. So, everybody ready to vote? Okay. All those in favor of the motion, signify the saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. Motion carries. Thank you.
And I would check with the city, too.
Bryce, you're the missing link.
I thought I was on the agenda yesterday, but it turns out I wasn't. So I sent on an email this morning to get on their next meeting, talk to them. I really appreciate everything you all do for our community. And we have to work together.
Yes, absolutely.
Any chance the smaller cities could help as well? Do you know, Paul, or may I talk to? Because, I mean, you do have people from the Junction area that you're helping as well.
So ask both the cities and see.
It would be great to have all this, you know, any cities to assist any way they could.
Okay. Just go and talk to the mayors.
You've got a good relationship with them.
All right. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Bryce. Have a good day. Happy Thanksgiving. All right. Next up, recycling director Angie Muncy. Come on down.
She's back there now. They're all Baptists back there. We already talked about it this morning.
They're Baptists.
They told me I was too because I got in the corner, so there you go. So I'm just here, you know, that we got the grant to get an EPS densifier, in other words, styrofoam. So I am ready to put that out for bid. I'm in a, I'm going to put it out for bid, but I'm going to deal with, Runkiff, Kentucky, happens to have one that is new and it's available now. So it's a lot cheaper. So the bids come in, it'll be a lot cheaper then. What was on the grant, and we won't have to wait six to eight months to get one. And we'll also save about $23,000 that I'll be able to get other stuff with that I've already talked to the state about.
Can they put a bid in?
Yes, we have to bid it out regardless because it's over $30,000.
So Runkie can put a bid in?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
I already talked to the state, all the legalities and all that stuff. We are good.
I saw what it was.
Excuse me, June?
Is this what we're looking at, though? This is what you're talking about?
The SK240, the one. That's all basically the information that anybody would have had.
Okay.
Yes, that's the one, the one with the little stars there.
Is that the one Runkie has?
That's the one I'm putting out for bid. Yes.
Okay. Is that the one they had?
They have one. They got one for Amazon, and they didn't use it. So instead of, since they had one, they can do it, put it in. If I have to get it through the other company, which is more or less Danish, it's tariffs and everything else. So they're definitely going to get the bid, no doubt.
Okay.
But we still have to bid out.
And this is a piece of equipment that will allow us to take styrofoam and make it into cubes.
Yes, you'll make the cubes, and we'll have a market for it.
And then we'll make a big pile and we'll all do your bill.
Then we'll make a big pile of it.
Big pile of styrofoam cubes.
Well, you don't. It's there.
Angie, I think my biggest TV is 32 inches, but I've got a buddy who's got a 70-inch. And I'm sure the foam was like this.
I wish they'd just quit making it.
Our guys will have to break it down. Our guys will have to break it to put it in the machine.
There's a big hopper. No, basically, it heats it, it densifies it, it basically, it gets hot is what it does. When it gets down in there, it gets hot and starts compressing and it comes out.
Yeah, it's got the copper on it.
And just feed it in like a log.
They can feed. It'll come out like a log.
Okay, so you are here to receive permission to advertise for bid for a foam densifier.
EPS machine basis.
Second.
Motion by Master Gaze, second by Master Harmon. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify the saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. Motion carries. You may advertise the bid.
Thank you.
Thank you.
By the way, thank you all for allowing me to go to the first-ever Archon Conference in Columbus the other week. Learned a whole lot and stuff that I can add and get more money.
All right.
For employees.
Any news on the convenience center, the air burn?
I wasn't prepared for that. It's not on the agenda. But no, everything's still in the process, and everything's still good to go.
All right. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good day.
Happy Thanksgiving.
You, too.
Workforce development. They're setting out the hall. Yay. Come on in.
Hello, hello.
All right, we've got Tiffany Reeves and Rowley Becker. And they're going to present.
Yep. You ready for me to go?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. So I'm going to give a little background on the OJT training contract. Back in March and April, whenever there was the winds, well, there's technically four storms that are connected together. You had the wind, you had the flooding and all that stuff. The educational labor cabinet had reached out to the local workforce areas to see if there was, any counties had any damage. But we know in Bluegrass that all the counties sustained a little bit, but Franklin really got it the worst, Franklin County did. So I reported that back whenever they were talking about applying for a grant. And the educational labor cabinet applied for a grant. It encompassed all of our 17 counties because of the four different weather-related issues that had happened over a small timeframe. And whenever they did that, we were awarded, for the Bluegrass, we were awarded $657,000. It is a three-year grant, right, and I'll point this out. It is a marathon, not a sprint. That's what I say with this. To help with the fiscal courts on alleviating some strain with some new hires.
Okay.
And that's where the OJT.
Excuse me a minute.
Yes.
That's 200 a year for the three years, or it's renewable 600 each?
No, no. That's 657,000 is the grant timeframe is, the three years. It expires June 15th of 2028.
I need to have that clarification.
Yep.
Yeah. And that's where the OJT contract comes in. And basically, and that's why we're here today to see if you guys would sign on the on-the-job training contract. And basically, that's where this grant comes into play, where we would be utilizing this opportunity. Basically, what it is, is for new hires. And we would reimburse the fiscal court up to 50% of the wages that they earned during that training period. The training length would be no less than six weeks, up to a maximum of 24 weeks. And so we would do, based off their wage, the training length, and the hours worked, we would then reimburse the fiscal court up to 50% of the wages they earned during that training period.
But there's a maximum amount, right?
There is a maximum amount. They cannot exceed 6,000.
Okay. All right. So 6,000?
So after 6,000, it just caps off right there, regardless of the training length. Yep.
So it's any position, new hire position that falls under your fiscal court, right? We have in Estill County, they have a custodial position that they're doing. In Mercer County, there's someone that's with the water. So in the city of Versailles, it's one of their police officers that we're working with them on.
So a new employee would have to fill out the pre-screening checklist?
You fill out the pre-screening.
We fill this out. Okay.
So the way it would work is, and so that brings me to my next point. So that pre-screening you have right there, you would fill that out, get that over to us, and then we would draw you up this blank agreement. I'm only seeing his screen that's sitting there, but it's that blank on-the-job training agreement based off the information that you put on the pre-screen. And then, yep, that's it. And then, once you sign off on that, you guys are good to go. And then, basically, what I would recommend is maybe getting us connected with the person that does the hiring or the fiscal court. And what we would do is, we would set up a different meeting with her just to kind of, just kind of walk this, or her and him, to walk the steps through the on-the-job training. So like, what are the first steps, second steps? And we do have a step-by-step guide that kind of shows that. But we can explain that a little bit.
Now, this is totally separate from VCTC and all that.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
This is through the Kentucky Career Center.
Yeah.
But yeah, once you sign off on it, that covers you guys up for the on-the-job training agreement. And it does expire June 30th. And then we would do the same thing July 1st. But once you guys sign off on this, then we will schedule a meeting with your HR department. And then we would go over the steps.
So basically, the three new employees that we introduced earlier in the meeting, they would have all qualified to do this had we, had this been applied.
Yeah, yeah. Yep.
But it looks like you're putting an emphasis on getting special consideration to hiring disabled vets and separated, recently separated vets in this program?
Yes. We always, with, all our funding technically comes from the Department of Labor, and that will always be a strong focus.
Fantastic. That's great.
Well, so right now, we're just asking if you guys would be interested in participating on the on-the-job training agreement. And then, like I said, if you guys sign off on it, then the next steps would be to have you guys fill out the pre-screen, we'll have a bill of disagreement, and then maybe schedule an appointment with your HR to.
Is there any contribution that we have to give?
No.
Okay.
Now, this is a reimbursement.
It's all grand.
We're paying for it first.
So we have a motion by Master Gaze or a second?
Your taxes are paid.
Second by Master Bonner?
Of course. It's not a free one.
Discussion?
I looked it over. I think it's a good thing. I think they'll pay up to, what's it like?
6,000.
6,000. But then you can ask her, like, up to like 11 or something like that.
10. There's a clause in there that I can approve up to 10,000 maybe, depending on what the training.
And we're getting ready to hire some officers and stuff like that. So something that's a really, really good thing to have. Great.
And plus you're partners with the career center, which, you know.
And Judge Boll sits on our board, so she gets all the updates and stuff, so.
Sorry for that.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion on approving the contract? All right. All those in favor signify the saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. Motion carries. Yay. All right. You all have a great day. Yeah, yeah. Happy Thanksgiving.
Yes.
Thank you all. Mike Rogers.
He's coming in.
Hello.
All right.
How are you all?
You're not surprised.
Yeah. Great. We'll let you introduce everybody.
Yeah, so thanks for the time this morning. We wanted to, the judge had an idea of having our billing team come and let you have face-to-face interaction with them. And we've been using them since 2019. They're going to talk a lot about all that stuff. I'll let them go ahead and introduce themselves, and then let them talk, and then I'll finish up.
Okay. Thank you.
My name's Dana Evans. I'm the managing director of AMV Mars. And we're a billing company out of Dooking, Kentucky. We've been doing, like you said, your own billing since 2019. We've been in the business for 20 years. But we're, our parent company is a 72-year-old family-owned business. And we've done physician, anything from physician billing to the ambulance and fire billing now. So we've got a little bit of a presentation for you to kind of go over what we've been able to do over these past four, five years, last five years.
Hi, I'm Heather Jeffrey, co-director of client engagement, compliance, and training. So I work closely with Mike. We go and do their annual trainings for the services and keep them up to date on all the compliance issues.
Okay.
My name is Philip Sanderson. I'm the senior director for business development. We've got five copies. I'm unsure exactly how many is going to be here, so if you all want to share them around. The cover there is kind of a cover letter. If you all would just take a minute, maybe just to kind of read through that. And then we'll take a few minutes. I understand we don't have all day, so we won't be here longer than we need to. But then we'll kind of go through here and just kind of point out some of the highlights of the presentation. All right. So if everybody's, yeah, if everybody's had a chance to kind of read through that, we, first of all, want to thank you all, thank Bull County for allowing us to partner with you and your ambulance service. I want to say this, and I'm not just saying this because we're here with you guys and Chief Rogers, but we work with a lot of EMS services across the country, right? Myself, I come from the industry. I've been in EMS for 34 years and come from, you know, administration and so forth. I want to tell you guys, and I think it speaks even why we're here, that you have someone to be very proud of for your leading your EMS service. Chief Rogers is probably, I would put him at the top 5%, 10% of all EMS directors and chiefs across the country we deal with. He goes above and beyond. And again, I'm saying this because I want you guys to know this. He goes above and beyond. That's why he's asked us to come here to talk to you guys, make sure we're doing a good job for you. But we have something in our organization where we do monthly calls with all of our services. Some opt out. He goes above. He wants a weekly call. So that means a lot. So I want everybody here to know that. So one of the things that, the first page here, I want to just kind of point out this page here. We started working with Bull County in 2019. If you remember, if you were here, I think you had to pay back a considerable amount of money back to the federal government. We can say that in all of our services across the country we work with, and in the history of our company, we've never had a situation like that go that extreme. And actually, in some cases, we get them out of that situation. But if you see here, when we first started taking you over, we've increased your collections from, you were doing 1.58 million. Now you're at annual payments of 2.1 million. So definitely a good job. Again, contribute that to Chief Rogers and his team. There are some more data points here. Happy to discuss those. But for the sake of time, I wanted to kind of jump over to this page here where it starts talking about deficiencies.
Before we move on.
Yes, sir.
An issue that Mike and I have talked about for several years and my background in what you do. It appears we've done a whole lot better on uncompensated care. Anything innovative down the road that's going to help us more on that? Because it's always been a very, very significant portion of our losses on the most important first service that we give to people in an emergency crisis. I know I'm asking a question very hard to answer, but uncompensated care is something the public doesn't understand until they see their insurance bill go up, especially on healthcare. And they don't realize how much that is in there for physicians, for hospitals, for emergencies, or everything. It's in the multi, multi-hundreds of millions in Kentucky.
Yes, sir. Good question, and it's the same way in every state. Uncompensated care is exactly what that is, right?
And we make up for it.
Right, exactly. You have to make up for it. So we do everything we can to try to ensure that there are compensation means, insurances, you know, other means, facility pay, whatever. We do everything we can to make sure that's happening before it becomes uncompensated. But truthfully, we're uncompensated, and we work with this. Matter of fact, we were just out in the hallway talking about a meeting today. We work with your local state government and legislative. That's where that has to change. So we get involved with your legislators or representatives. We get involved with your state associations. Again, right now, we're actually working on a bill with the state legislation to try to help mitigate some of that. And that's where this really probably has to go.
That's interesting, because several of us have been here seven and a half years. And I don't think we've ever had, Judge, a seminar on uncompensated care. And I'd bet when we're in there with hundreds of other colleagues from across the state, they've never had a presentation on it either. So anything we can do to help you with our two major associations to be on the agenda, substantively on the agenda, not just 15 minutes and gone, let us know.
Okay. Thank you, yeah, because we need all the effort we can get. And we could talk a long time about that. So definitely, thank you. We'll definitely.
Our spring conferences, you know, they're probably not even starting to contact people, so.
Okay. Well, I'll certainly get with Mike and find out when that is.
Mike will get with me, you know.
Absolutely.
I've been keeping the judge up to date on the bill that he's talking about. It's about the commercial payers in our committee. Panhuman, Anthem's only paying 25 cents for every dollar we're charging, effectively pushing a private pay insurance company back on the county government to make up that difference. So we, it's something that going forward, I'll keep you up to date on. We will definitely need you to help push that with our state legislators.
More than that.
And I'll just take it one step further. Again, we could talk a long time about this very subject. But just the matter of, at the federal level, whenever you talk to a legislative person, most of, 99% of the time, they don't understand that a patient has to be transported in an ambulance to a hospital for us to be able to bill. This is Medicare we're talking about. For it to be able to bill. They're like, you mean, you can't just bill them if you don't transport them? The answer to that is no, currently. There's been years and years and years and years of trying to get that changed. Why does that matter? Well, there's a certain amount of those uncompensated transports that don't need to go by ambulance that if we could just simply bill Medicare or. that if we could just simply bill Medicare or Medicaid, or some Medica's do it, or other commercials, then we're talking costs would go here and revenue would go here. So those are the conversations that we need to, need help on. And there's a lot of it going on.
So it's not the inconvenience, you all. Where do you come from? You're not here in Boyle County, I'm sure.
We're in Cracking.
Yeah.
Well, I love to go down. That's why my wife is born there, so.
Yeah. Well, I'm a crackhead here in Washington. Yeah.
Don't hold it against me. I actually live in Tennessee.
But it kind of works to our advantage a bit, because we can look at and see what the other states are doing. And then we can kind of bring that, bring that expertise over into Kentucky and vice versa. So that, that does help us on some of these legislatures that we're going to and trying to get more reimbursement.
Right.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you. Good question. We definitely need all the help we can get. I wanted to just kind of point, point our attention over to this page here where it's talking about deficiencies. Because this is where, this is where Boyle County Chief Roberts and Rogers and his team really can help make a difference. So in 2022, we started noticing what we call deficiencies. Deficiencies simply means claims are not able to be paid. It's for a lot of different reasons. So at that point in time, there was three hundred and forty-eight runs. There's a lot of reasons why this, this could have happened, totaling $295,000, lots and lots of money. So we started trying to dig in. Now, we already, prior to this time, contracted with a third-party compliance company that comes in and does audits and also training with Chief Roberts and his team. So we're looking at this, 2023, we see, we see that that percentage rate increases. So, you know, we're like, okay, we got to figure out what's going on, because obviously, we're not going in the right direction. What's happening here? What, where is this money not coming in at? So what we did, Heather and her team, she works with compliance. So we started double teaming, training with the staff, the EMS staff, double teaming all the compliance stuff along with our third-party team, along with our internal team. And as you can see, again, proactive with, with your chief. In 2024, we reduced that down to 3.36%. Now, we're talking over $100,000 gain right there, you know, just by being proactive. And also, I want to add that, again, us working together with you guys, the, we do this external audit with a third-party company that would prevent you guys from ever having to do what you did in 2019, pay money back. This year, that audit was a zero percent error rate. That's fantastic. That's, that's fantastic. So the next page here, unless you have any questions, we'll, we'll move out of the way. Kind of gives a summary of all pages here. Looking back on the last four years, your annual payments went from 1.79 to 2. million dollars. Your increased rep per run went from 341 to 359. That's a huge jump right there. And then your deficiencies went down from, went down seven, by 71%. Again, all of those add up to, you know, pennies in dollars, which makes a lot of money. Saves your taxpayers money as well.
The other thing about the, the work that we've done in the training and everything, not only did it decrease the deficiencies by going in and teaching them how to document more detail and better, we've been able to raise that service level up of what they're doing and actually get reimbursed better for all the services that they're providing. And we'll continue to do on that. We'll continue to do annual, even biannual trainings, whatever's needed as we see the problems coming.
All right. Does anybody have any questions or anything we could address or answer, or?
No, but you're 100% accurate on Director Rogers and his team. We know how very lucky you are to have him and his whole squad. And the fact that he's been able to grow that squad and still keep that high level, that high bar to really, you know, give top-notch care to every Boyle County citizen, we're, we're very fortunate for, for all of them. Director Rogers was also the one that brought you guys to us, because at the time, when we took office, you know, for our, for our first term, we were lucky to get back, I think, was it 0.24% of, of this? And now we're, we're looking at getting back about half, you know, which doesn't seem fair or a lot, but, you know, considering where we were and the, the amount of tax dollars we were happy to spend to recuperate the differences. This is, this is night and day. This just, yeah, likes leadership and along with Tim and everyone else that they have learned. This just, just shows how much they care about Boyle County and we are grateful to have them.
Yeah, I want to just, like Jason said, our supervisors and our providers are the ones that are diligent. I mean, we have to send them runs back and, well, we're doing twenty to thirty runs a day per average. And it's a lot of work on them, and those are the real people behind the scenes that are making the difference. Not only people's lives, but in our billing culture of, you know, trying to get as much as we can and maximizing our revenue. So I want to really thank all of our providers and our supervisors, all of them do. Michael Mangley, Kimberly, Brad, Tim, everybody does a really good job following.
It's really rare for us sometimes to have a service that will accept our feedback and actually put those, that feedback into action in order to get the results that we've been able to get.
Right. Mike and I talk about that a lot. We meet every week, and so, you know, there's some times that that's all we discuss, you know, is, is the numbers and the percentages and the amount of savings that we're getting. So we really appreciate you all for being there to help with our team. And then our team can, you know, take those numbers and, and reflect back to you all what needs to be changed or, you know, coding or whatever. But, yeah, so we really appreciate Mike and his team. Yeah, they do a great job.
And I will say, the zero percent error rate on audit, that just doesn't happen.
That does not happen.
In, in my career with AMV, I think I've seen that maybe two or three times. So that is a phenomenal job that the crews are doing in, in making sure their documentation is compliant, so.
Thank you. Thank you, yeah. Any other questions, comments?
No.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you all so much.
Thank you. Safe travels, happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you.
Appreciate you all being here. And then Mike, do you have a ambulance bid?
Sorry, I was kind of got so excited.
Yeah.
Yep, thanks, Judge, for reminding me. So on the agenda today, we have permission to bid an ambulance for a 2027 delivery. We just received our two that we ordered back in April of '22. The backlog is still, it's not quite as significant, but there's still no guarantees that we'll get it in 2027. So I would ask permission to go ahead and start that bid process for you guys.
Sure, moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Master Ellis, a second by Master Gay. Any discussion on advertising to bid for a new ambulance?
What's that, what's that projected cost on that ambulance going to be? Are we still at 275, or?
Yeah, I, I would say 275, 300.
Okay, all those in favor of the motion signify the saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion carries.
One thing Mike, speaking of ambulances, he's kind of brought up that piqued my interest is possibly looking at, it may require us to purchase more often, but looking to sell our ambulances sooner instead of running them into the ground and get nothing for them, kind of selling them and getting, keeping better equipment. Say, once we're in the new building, is it probably where we should be, where they're all covered?
I think we'll have an opportunity to try that next, or this next year, or next calendar year, or next fiscal year. I think we'll have an ambulance that is around that target date, hoping that we can, we can try. If we can identify, same thing with the Enterprise, if we can identify that moment where they're, you know, we've used them, but they're at the most, but now they're starting to have problems. We've got the mileage, it's between 120 and 150. They definitely started having issues then, even being diesel. If we can, if we can sell them for.
Those engine hours.
Yeah.
Just don't worry, it's not a miles, it's the hour.
Yeah, they idle a long time. It does have a smart island system where if it's idle a long time, it shuts off and then turns back on. They're smart ambulances, but they still, we make a lot of runs, so.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you all.
All right, have a good day. Okay, what everyone's been waiting for, next on the agenda, is Hannah Gray, Playing and Zoning Director, and she is going to discuss the text amendment. And let me hope that you on pause one minute. Will you have the sheriff come in? He wants to introduce that new guy. I forgot. One minute. Could you take a breath while I?
I'll take another minute.
Yeah. Come on in. Sorry, I forgot.
All right. Sorry. Earlier, I was reading the elementary kids at Junction. They had a really cool thing for a bunch of police officers and deputy stuff. And then I believe he was upstairs getting HR stuff, and then he's got about six minutes to get to a strict fingerprint appointment, so.
Okay, all right. I saw him walking down the hall this morning.
Good morning, you all. This is Jacob Atwood. He is our newest deputy as of today, as today's his first day here.
All right, welcome.
He has about five years' experience. He's originally from Casey County.
I knew it was Atwood's name. He had to be from Casey County.
He is a, he's married. He has four children under five. He's a pride for him.
Yes.
He is a Marine Corps veteran and.
All right.
He's, you know, in, in Casey County, he's, I'm sure, it's a rural county, he's worked by himself, but he's very experienced and he's a good narcotics unit and loves his job. And we just, luckily, he saw that we had, this is one of our three positions you guys gave us, and we're very fortunate to have your all support, continued support. But this is Jacob Atwood.
All right.
And we're very, very happy to, to have him on our team.
All right, well, welcome to the team. We love having veterans employed, so, and another Marine is even a bonus, so.
Interviews Brian Caldwell and Kyle, of course, from Marines. And Brian was in our interview, and they got to go with how about got up and walked out, because they were all Marines. Can you work on their uniforms and get them all tidier? Parks has been working on it for years, trying to get the uniforms straightened up, but see what we have. But thank you all again.
Yeah.
Welcome and thank you.
Welcome, yeah.
I'll be out, I'll be out in the hall.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. All right, now, Ms. Hannah, come on up. So Hannah is going to present the text amendment, and then when she is finished presenting, what I would like to do is just go around the table to anybody that wants to comment and be called upon to comment and kind of keep this in an orderly fashion, that's agreeable with everybody. Okay?
I did print out the amendment, if that's okay, if everybody wants to look at it.
Yeah, yeah.
Are you have it already? Okay, perfect. Just wanted to make sure you all have it in front of you. All right, so the Danville Boyle County Planning and Zoning Commission met in a regular session on October 22nd, 2025, with eight members present. The commission's vote was four ayes, three nays, and one abstention to approve the proposed zoning amendment text, or proposed zoning ordinance text amendment to increase the minimum lot size from one acre to five acres in the agricultural zone and amending section, by amending section 4.3.5, which brings us consistent with state regulations and also is consistent with the objectives of the adopted 2025 comprehensive plan.
Okay, Master Kelly.
So I, I just want to kind of cut to the chase. Yesterday, myself, Master Gay, Judge, had a good conversation with, with the members that's in the audience right now, and, and we had a very good constructive conversation, kind of how this should go. You know, we, we've had issues out of the county with uncontrolled growth. And the point of this was never to tell farmers what to do or not do with their land or what, tell people what to do with their land, and try to figure out, how do we help those that say we've got too much traffic on these small roads? We want the county to come in and, and, you know, fix all these roads. And traditionally, that would be done through the people that are doing the developing or whatever. So, you know, we're, we're trying to figure out where, how this started, when it started, and why we've seen such an increase. And during the conversation yesterday, and it actually came up during the judge's meeting on Monday, you know, back in 2018, when we kind of went away from this minor plat, final plat option. It seemed like that's where all of this snowballed. And so after the conversation yesterday, and I've spoken to a lot of people and, you know, just making sure they understood the actual facts instead of the stuff that was being spewed out there. But I would like to make a motion that we actually push this back to planning and zoning to regroup and come up with possibly looking at doing, going back to the minor final plat option and possibly getting together a couple individuals to help guide that. We realize that you're new, you're very intelligent, we're lucky to have you. But maybe getting together with a few people and kind of figuring out and getting this done right.
Judge, I'll second that motion.
Okay, I have a motion by Master Kelly, a second by Master Ellis.
Do you have suggestions on what you would like to see in the?
Yeah, I do.
We do?
I do, but I, I definitely think that having some input from maybe a few people come back and almost have like a slight committee of, of individuals, maybe developers, farmers, lay donors, individuals that really can current this out. And to have an understanding of the, of the objective is that, you know, the county is in no way able to widen, fix, provide all the services that are, that have come out because of this. You know, our roads are deteriorating quicker, you know, and we just don't have the tax base or property taxes to be able to compensate for all that. So, so if we can kind of figure out a way to not, we never wanted to stop growth. We just want to, you know, we have planning and zoning. We need to utilize planning and zoning to make sure that everybody is, is protected, you know, out there. And we're just not seeing this crazy growth and problems. You know, we've, our EMS, you know, we want to make sure that they reach everybody. They got to be fulfilling some of these roads back there. But if there's, if not a possibility, we're, we're setting off the failure.
Master Gay.
Yes, thank you. You do a good job of drawing the crowd, by the way. No, I appreciate the, the motion, and I do think this keeps us at the, at the 50,000 square foot. I don't know why it didn't just an acre. Probably should just be an acre, but that's something that can be looked at as well when we send it back. I do think it's important, though, that, and I feel like we have, I think it's important that we give the proper amount of weight and study to an issue that has been recommended by our Planning and Zoning Commission. Because this is a group of our citizens that we task with overseeing our planning and zoning within this community. And there's a lot of, that's a very legal position and decision-making process that's set out in KRS 100. So it's important that we give due weight and consideration to a recommendation that comes from that body. And, and I feel like we, we owe it to them to do that, and I feel like we have in looking at this, this issue. And I, I talked yesterday about how I've been looking for the why. And the why really, and then you alluded to this, and I think it's important that those in the audience and everywhere really make sure to understand and familiarize yourself with the comprehensive plan. That actually, after a two-year process, was just, just enacted, maybe even at this same meeting.
Yes, at the October 22nd meeting.
At this same meeting. And so this is our, our community's document that is the blueprint for the future of our community. And a lot of people oftentimes are critical of planning and zoning for not doing enough planning. This is the community's plan. This is the document that is required by KRS to be set every five years, updated every five years. And it usually takes multi-years to get it updated.
The previous one was done in 2018. 2017, I believe, so.
2017. Of course, we had COVID and some other things that occurred in that interim. So it was not necessarily a five-year plan. It became a little longer plan. But it has now been updated, and there are a lot of great answers to questions in this document. It's, it's online, you can find it on the Planning and Zoning's website. So I would encourage everybody to become familiar with that, especially if you're interested in developing your property within this community. Same thing with the Future Land Use Map, which is part of it, known as the FLUN. So I'd encourage you to become familiar with that. But one of the points in the plan that I believe this is the why, so that's my long soapbox here, is to get to the why. One of the things in the plan is to set standards of development for agricultural land division to minimize the impact on farming activities and to preserve the rural character outside of the urban service area. And the action plan is to review and update subdivision regulations to include minimum lot sizes, shared access, and clustering requirements that limit fragmentation of productive farmland. So that's where, that's the, that's the part of the plan that I think we're now saying, planning and zoning, let's find a better way to get to that position that accomplishes. planning and zoning, let's find a better way to get to that position that accomplishes that goal. Because if you look at the maps that are in the comprehensive plan, our available amount of good farmland is limited in this community. You know, that doesn't mean we want to tell anybody what to do with their farmland. I just think it's important to recognize the reality that we have a limited resource of farmland in this community. And I hope everybody in this room agrees that that's an important resource, that we do want to allow the landowners to do what they want with their land. But hopefully, well into the future, farming of that land will be something that will be an important component of what happens on that good farmland. To Magistrate Cullen's point in his motion, I do think that in sending this back, we're asking that the Planning and Zoning Commission revisit the minor plat, final plat of the past, which it seems like we're wanting to go back to the past in this effort. Let's scratch this and go back to the past in revisiting the minor plat, final plat approach. And I think at that time, it was three per year, three plats could be done per year, three minor plats.
It's still that way until it turns into a major, so.
Okay.
And that's really getting down in the weeds of what we all need to do.
But that's where I think we need to be in the weeds on this to accomplish what's.
But not today.
Right, not today. This needs to get sent back. But with those type of things considered and what kind of road frontage needs to be in place, what kind of width of the roads, all those things. But that's where, that's to the committee point that Magistrate Cullen was making. But I'll stop there. That's enough of my soapbox. But I do feel like we can get back to where we've been with the 50,000 square feet and send it back to planning and zoning for more consideration.
Thank you, Magistrate Gay. Magistrate Bowden.
I love Bull County. I love living here. I brace my kids. A lot of my grandkids are here. And I think we've done a lot of good things and our farmers that are utilizing their land in a really good way. And I don't mind kicking the can down the road. This seems to be kicking it down till we can talk about it some more. But I want it well advertised so that these group of people, it doesn't bypass them. I want to make sure we advertise what the new plan is, you know, not just kick it down and then come back in. So I want it so well advertised that everybody knows to come back if they're that involved, you know, if they're, because I agree that this is a major decision for these people. And I agree that they, they need the input. And I feel like some, nobody did it intentionally. I don't think anybody intentionally left this group of people out, but I feel like they were kind of left out, even though we had the, I went to two of the meetings for the comprehensive plan. And, you know, I was doing all that, I enjoyed it, it was really fun, but it didn't still, you know, I didn't comprehend how big these changes could be. So I just want to make sure that it's well advertised and everybody knows what's being proposed. This is off the table. We've got a new proposition, and I want everybody to know that.
Thank you, Magistrate Bowden. Magistrate Ellis?
I'm echoing a good bit that Magistrate Bowden has said here. It is so very difficult to get information out to the public in a timely fashion, to get to meetings like we have today, and we have a full room, and that almost never happens. But as I characterized it a couple meetings back, this hit everybody like stepping on a rake in tall grass and the handle clings right up and smacks you in the forehead. Because we had people in very responsible court-appointed positions who had no idea that this was coming up. We had people on this court who said, "It is in the plan to have a five-acre changeover." No, there's very broad language, which I'm now going to echo with Paula, that you can sit in these meetings and you read an entire paragraph, and there's no specific information there, even down to a hundred-foot frontage or anything like that. And it's when we all go home. And with the greatest respect to the newspaper, people are busy. They miss it in the newspaper. Remarkably, I did a little bit of work on this, and I did a second piece of work less than 24 hours ago, because I sent, I think I sent it out at 11:05 yesterday. And I have well over 100 responses, and over 100 of those people shared it with their Facebook list. And it's that kind of communication that we as a court, perhaps with our own Facebook, with, with planning and zoning, we've got to push it out to the public. Three or four spots on the radio don't necessarily work when these folks are on tractors, or these folks are just raising their families and have nothing but woodlands, but want to pass that land on one acre at a time, as one person said very eloquently. In many cases, this is the 401K of a farm family. And it's that communication that Paula mentioned that we need every time. It should go out to enforcement, it should go out to the court, not just into the newspaper, where six of our seven members were very surprised three weeks, or three meetings ago when we heard that this was a potential problem. So communication on the front end, anytime there's going to be a significant meeting.
So how do you do it, Tom? How do you tell everybody in the community that they need to?
Facebook's your work 24, 23 and 15 minutes ago.
So you've got 30,000 people to look at your Facebook profile? I mean, that's, I'm sorry, I understand the issue here. And to be honest with you, I only found out about the meeting in planning and zoning because I was already at the city of Danville with a meeting for Parks and Rec, talking about the skate park. And I saw that the meeting was happening, so I walked in, sat down, and started listening. So this idea that I had all this extra knowledge is ridiculous. The only thing I, the only reason I knew it was actually, something was on, on the back burner, was a constituent of mine called and said, "Hey, I saw on the agenda that's posted on websites that this was happening." And so I said, "Oh, that's interesting." And so then I was there. So you can't force everybody to read something. We don't live in that kind of society.
We can make the extra effort. And interestingly, you're confirming something that happened 21 years ago when a road diet, how many people remember the term road diet? How many people have any concept of what road diet means? It means that we put, because it was so well advertised, we put bicycle lanes all across the city of Danville, almost in the dark of night that came. And one woman happened to be, one very prominent woman downtown, happened to be in Franklin, and walked past the door and did a double take when she heard Danville Road Diet. She said, "What is a road diet?" And she found out that they were going to stripe all our roads. People need more communication. That's all I'll say, Judge.
One last comment. Hannah, how long have you been on this job?
What day is it? About five months.
Okay, yeah.
And you come in, and you come into something that's so emotional, and so we appreciate you listening to us, and you're trying to, and we're not attacking you.
No, I understand, yeah.
We're wanting these people, as well as whoever's listening, to understand that we want them to be a part of this decision. We're not going to take it over and decide for them. We're going to see if we can't work with, and we're not attacking.
No, no, I understand. And on the topic of communication, I hear that completely. And so like, if anybody wants to be on the agenda mailing list, I put you on the agenda mailing list. So if anybody wants to get that, but I'm open to like adding a step in the process because I understand that advocacy messaging is not being seen as much lately. But feel free to like, you know, I'm open to suggestions about like how to communicate that better with the public.
I just want to get on the agenda mailing list.
Oh, I can write your email down, or you can just call, but I can write your email down and I can just add you.
That's good. I think that's great.
Yeah, and we have the extension office, we have RECC, we have several entities that if they receive communication, then you will have large attendance in the future.
Yeah, and I'm open to better suggestions as well.
Magistrate Slater.
First of all, I want to thank Magistrate Ellis for defining and clarifying what road diet means, because when he said that term, I was thinking of a diet made up of roadkill in my district. So anyway, you know, there's always a tension between private property rights and planning and zoning, and there's always that tension. And I strongly believe in private property rights 100%. And you balance that with responsible development and such. That tension's not necessarily bad because it creates counterweights, it keeps us from going off too far on one edge or the other. But I do like the idea of the minor final plat from what I've learned about in the last few days. There are probably maybe some other solutions as well that are better than the one that was on the amendment. So I've heard buffer zones and things like that, but I do think we need to look at other options. And I would be in favor of the committee being formed out of, you know, important stakeholders that would determine what the best solution is, so.
Okay, that would be to Hannah to help coordinate that and.
We basically talked about that because there's, you're being new, and there's a lot of history out there of people that understand why it was even the way it was before. Before we had somebody who came in and just completely switched stuff around on this. And for my two cents, I mean, my biggest problem here is that I see the implications of what's happening. I hate the property tax. I wish we didn't have it at all. But if the way we're growing keeps going, I settled the local planning committee for the, for Bull County schools, and the amount of money they're going to have to spend very soon to start rehabbing Junction City, Parable, and then they're talking about expanding and building a bigger high school. It's only going to come one way, that they're going to have to jack up our taxes more, which everybody, you know, doesn't want, you know. Like I said, I would love to pay no taxes on property, it's my property. So, but that's, that's kind of the way my mind works. It's all the finance-based things, like, okay, we're growing, we don't have a plan for this growth, next thing you know, you know, our tax bill's doubled because, you know, we've got to pay for much larger schools, and we've got a great school system that, you know, it's a, that's an issue we have where we have something so fantastic that people want to move here and be part of it. And, and so it's like, you know, how do you, how do you figure all that out, you know? So that's where my mind went with this when we were talking about, okay, how do we kind of slow this so we can kind of grow it some?
Magistrate Harmon, do you have any comments?
I don't know how many years, but my granddaddy, he farmed, lived and rode, a minor farm, which was just 3,500 acres. President of Bank, a farmer's bank, he was the owner of that land. He told my granddaddy, he said, "Here's some money. You go up and get what equipment you need to buy and order, get it all here, and you start farming." I grew up with pigs. He only had about 400 of them. I grew up with sheep. He kept about 150 to 200. Grew up with cattle, had about 600 to 700 cattle that he farmed out there. Grew up with tobacco around, he had 50 acres. My granddaddy wasn't no scientist, he wasn't no millionaire, but he lived on a piece of property and worked for a man that wanted to see that farm land produce. And I think we are coming back to a time that you're in position to produce in America. You're going to get that opportunity. And I know that there's a lot of memories out there from me as a kid, and I was just old enough to get in the way, you know? Go to the house to your grandmother and stay with her, my granddaddy said. He ran Gigi one time out of the field dropping tobacco sticks because he was putting tobacco sticks up under the tractor, breaking them. And he come off the tractor with a tobacco stick, and Gigi flat-footed the fence and run to the house, and granddad dropped the fence and threw the tobacco stick at him and came back and they continued on. So I know what it is as a child to see your grandparents, your parents, your uncles and aunts, everybody worked on a farm. Our grandmother, all she did was make butter. She'd sell about 10 pounds, 12 pounds a week, and she'd sell eggs and hens, kept about 2,000. I mean, these folks were back before we had a lot of the modernization stuff we have today. But where would we be in America if we didn't have our farmers? What are you going to eat tonight? "We got this stuff coming in from Korea, it's pretty good stuff. We don't know what it is, but it'd be good." We've got to protect our farmland.
Call a question, Judge.
All right, question has been called. Is there a second?
You don't mean after call.
All right, we've already done that. Okay, so the motion, I'm going to repeat. It's to deny the amendment as presented, send back to planning and zoning to consider other options, including a minor final plat option, enacting that as part of a compromise. Okay, that sound right to you all? Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, signify the saying aye. Is there any opposed? Motion carries. Go back to planning and zoning, and we'll look forward to what we come up with with the committee.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
I'd like to say, to tack on to what Magistrate Harmon said, I grew up on a farm that wasn't the best producing farm. My dad wasn't the best farmer, but he always said it was a good place to raise a crop of
Okay. Okay, so I was going to comment, but we got called for the question, so I'll just comment now. I just think there, because of the timeliness that we've received this comp plan, we need more research, we need to have more conversations, we need to think about what we're doing because we need to get this right. This doesn't need to be something that we put in and we vote on and we do that and then it not serve the people as it should. So I just wanted to make that comment, and, you know, unless Kelly Griffin comes out there on my road and starts to put on the subdivision, then I might have to eat my words, but I'm just picking on Kelly. All right, so, thank you, Hannah. We appreciate you being here and look forward to what comes next. All right, thank you. Okay, last on the agenda is our treasurer, Shannon Green.
I just want to present the monthly settlement for October. It was in your packets.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
Anything we need to know specifically? All's good.
All's good.
All right, any questions? All right, we will go into magistrate reports, and Magistrate Gay, you get to start us off.
All right, I'll start us off. The Martin Luther King Day Committee, which is a city committee that I serve on, has been working hard getting ready for Martin Luther King Day, which is coming fast after the holidays, January 19th. And we will, by the next meeting, we'll have, not yet, by the next meeting, the first meeting in December, should have a budget request for the county for sponsorship, which should be similar to last year's request. We're going to once again partner with Center College, so it's kind of a combination of Danville, Bull County, and Center College. Right now, the tentative schedule is for the march to begin at 11:30 to the Norton Center with the program beginning at noon. And one of the things that is a little bit different this year is, and this is part that we're still working on, so it's still tentative, is in having lunch in the dining commons at Center College with, if it works out, with some, a very reduced lunch that would be provided. And that's where we're kind of working on some sponsorship and other things for that. And then following that, there would be a service day for the Center College students, and they're actually looking for service projects. If anybody knows of any projects, it would be, they could use some extra hands on that day. It's a day where they're not at school on that day, and so they're going to hopefully coordinate some service projects that afternoon after lunch for mainly the students to take on, but obviously, any of us, any community members could join in. We also, this year, are going back to a joint youth choir made up of Danville and Bull County high school students to perform during the event, along with a community choir that will be performing during the event. So that's that update, and I think that's all I. So that's that update and I think that's all I, all I have. Just want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving and happy and safe Thanksgiving.
All right. Thank you magistrate Gay. Magistrate Sleeper.
Yes. Just like to say it was an honor or privilege to be a part of the program for the memorial for our events on Monday, November 10th. And privileged to help honor them. And CAECO conference, we all went to, I believe, to present some of the presentations, especially on artificial intelligence and crisis communication. The EDA met on November 17th and a lot of things in progress still, nothing new to report really. We're waiting on attorneys and things like that, so. And Judge Bottom, I attended the Whittaker Bank ribbon cutting open house, their new facility, their new location on the 18th. And I also would like to wish everyone a happy and safe Thanksgiving.
All right. Thank you, sir. Magistrate Ellis.
Thank you, Judge. First, I'd just like to thank folks who came out today, all the folks and I received input of concern from every one of our districts. And what we've achieved today in making sure that the public in the future will be fully aware, we all have to pay attention, but sometimes I have to be hit in the head and understand that something out there is really critical and I need to take a look. But back in the 30s, on the U.S. Supreme Court, Brandeis made a comment, something to the effect that sunlight is the best disinfectant. And that says a lot to me and, you know, what we're responsible for as a court in making sure that 32,000 plus people in Boil County are aware of the actions that are going on around us. And in this one, we're, we're directly responsible ultimately for the decision that was made today. And I'm just grateful to everyone who got involved so that we can exercise reason, ration, logic as we move forward. I am thrilled, and I have no connection to this, trust me, but I am thrilled that I learned on Facebook that wonderful tool, that the quick recall team of Boil County High School, I believe, has an opportunity to go to nationals this year. Don't want to overstate that, but, but I think that's exactly what I read and I've already been in contact with the superintendent Wade to find out more about that. That's just really, really exciting. Or forget about that, pull out a report here. Judge, in my district and I'm sure in, in perhaps all the rural districts, with the state's new law on side-by-sides where, my goodness, you might already spend 18 to $30,000 on a good side-by-side, but the new state's law for safety purposes has you equip it even more for daylight and dark and even in the dark to qualify to ever be on a county road. We have not yet acted on that provision of the new state law, but one kind of interesting contact that I got, I've had several others, but a gentleman's just bought farmland and he had joins us with another county. And he came from that other county where he's been driving his county roads anyway all his life. And now that he has a piece in Boil County, he went to register it next door and they said, "Well, yeah, we'd be glad to take your money on that, but you know, you gotta stay off the county roads." So, so I'd like for us sometime after the new year to revisit that, almost too cold unless you're checking your cattle, but, but for entertainment sometime early before spring, if we could get that back on the agenda.
Sure. We can get that on in January.
I think a lot of folks would appreciate that, that as an opportunity.
Okay. Thank you.
I do have a Public Works committee report.
Okay.
And we met at 1:02 in the judge's office on November 11th. And the issues included year-end blacktopping of these. And I don't even need to invite you because I always hear from you that if you've got potholes, we're getting toward that diminishing point where they can be repaired. Road paving in the spring that's under consideration to be acted on by the court is Route 300, which is a state road, but we're negotiating with them. Baker Lane, which is in the county, God be West Webster, Chamber, Dryport, Ball Hollow, and Reynolds Roads. We've had a tremendous issue with dead trees, especially with ash trees. So please never hesitate to call your magistrate because one Sunday evening, fortunately, this was in the summer, I got a phone call, very remote in my district. And our guys had to work up into the dark for about an hour and a half, but they will come night or day if there's a crisis situation. And this was one of the county roads where the school buses and everything would be We work with the developers, he's left, but we work with the developers of land and individuals who are building homes to install culverts. The owner pays for the culvert, but we help out in that process. A new 5,500 Dodge truck has been approved by fiscal court. And Judge, I haven't checked, but since November, have we got that in now?
It came in, did it? Yep, yep. It's here. Thanks.
Yeah, good. Okay. Public Works completed extensive work on the Fred Kane buildings in the property. Discussions are underway and Julie, you might know more about this at this point because this is almost a month, well, it's over a month, for the state approval of the refurbished sprinkler system. Any news on that?
It was approved.
It was approved.
Yay.
Wonderful. I know that was, that was a process. And in a similar project requiring state approval, an architect will be consulted regarding roof reconstruction, key focus being the stability and weight-bearing capacity.
That passed a engineering.
These are the primary issues and we adjourned on 11:11 at 1:41. Thank you. Judge, that's all I have.
And that's your motion?
I make a motion for the approval of Public Works committee report.
All those in favor? Signify the saying aye.
All aye.
Any opposed nay? Motion carries. That all you have magistrate Ellis?
Yes. Thank you, Judge.
All right. Thank you. Magistrate Bonner.
Yes. December the 13th at 6:00 PM, we'll have the Junction City Christmas Parade. Now, that's always a fun time. Of course, I'm excited to be going to the Parable and the Danville and also Junction City Matters meets, December 1st at 5:30 at City Hall. And that's always a, that's a history harvest night too. So anyone that has history in Junction City, they can come in and the library will take that information and put it, compile it together. One other thing, have we determined if we're gonna take that bale down out of the tower or is?
Well, it's still a working process.
Yeah, we have code on the agenda to come at the next meeting.
Okay. I hadn't heard anything very much, so I thought I'd ask. Okay. I'm very thankful to have all of my family in Boil County because I have the, the people at Fort Myers and my family down there, they're in, so I'm really thankful. So I hope everybody has a really thankful, great Thanksgiving day. And that's all I have.
All right. Thank you. Magistrate Harmon.
Sheriff, want a happy Thanksgiving. Hope you can be with the family you have left, like myself. It'll be my niece and our children, our daughter, grandchildren, they're in Chicago. We'll be going there Christmas. They've been to Chicago, the flowers, land, leaves. I heard it's a little bit different.
Different from Boil County.
Yeah. Be with your family. Make time, be there, enjoy them while you have them.
All right. Thank you. Magistrate Cullen.
Boil County Sheriff's Office Committee met this morning. It was myself, Steve Sleeper, Sheriff Bottom was here for a little bit, but then he had to go out to do some community service. And then Kyle Lyons wrapped it up with us. He said, "Tax collection is going very well and staff is working very hard to keep it smooth," which is code for Janus is in, up to her neck in tax bills. We have one deputy coming in, which we met today and through the pipeline. We did discuss possibly trying to really push more drug intervention, finding officers with a lot of experience in drug intervention and really kind of put that back on the forefront to, we're starting to see a little more, a little more drug activity happening in the county. We hate that because I know we worked pretty hard on it for a while and I know they're still working hard on it, but it just needs, it needs more attention. He said cars are all running very well and no known problem. And then we had discussed trying to figure out how we can help, this is next year, but extra staffing at the 250 celebration, especially for the free concert with Eddie Montgomery. So Jack Hendricks and I spoke about that and he was concerned and wants to make sure we figure that one out, you know, sooner rather than later. So, and I had, I'd actually made the recommendation that instead of looking for volunteers, the Junction City Matters, when they did the balloon race, they actually hired an outside parking group and they did a great job. So I said, maybe that's probably the route you all want to go. So.
Yow. You said yow.
I, oh. Again, my grandmother, my grandma was born in Louisville, grew up in Crab Orchard.
Yeah. He likes throwing that way back, so.
Although it was funny because when we were in New York for work this last week and, and I was talking and the guy I work with, he said, "Man, you're, you're in this city for like 20 minutes and I can start hearing that northeastern accent come out." I'm like, "Oh, please take me back." So, anyway. So, so that's our, that's our report from this morning. I'll go ahead and put that as a motion to accept.
Okay. Second by magistrate Sleeper. Any discussion? All those in favor, signify the saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed nay? Motion carries. Attorney.
Hey Judge, if I could jump back in.
Yes.
One other thing, I forgot.
Did you finish?
Oh, yeah. Refinished?
Yes. Yeah, something comes up.
You said it like you were wrapping it up.
I was just making a motion.
Okay. My apologies.
I did one, I forgot, a couple of things, small little things happening in my downtown district here. The tree lighting is Friday, the 28th, 6:30?
Usually it's at 6:00.
I think it's 6:30. The tree lighting is 6:30 Friday night, the 28th. And the Christmas parade is December the 6th, as well as all the other Christmas festivities that are going on that day in downtown Danville. So I want to encourage everybody to come out and enjoy the festivities.
All right. Thank you. Attorney here.
Yes, I got to attend the CAECO event with everyone this past year, past couple of weeks. It was really nice. And one of the events I attended was, was talking about open records and there's a few things we need to change in our rules as to open records. So I'm gonna get with Julie on that. And other than that, it was good to see everybody and just kind of hang out with our magistrates. I really like that. Just get to know you all better on a personal level. I think that's important. And as far as the side-by-side, you know, you want to revisit that. I mean, I think that's fine to do. We did have a town meeting at Air County a while back. Farmers and everyone else attended. We had a raise of hands who wanted to do it, who didn't. And it was kind of overwhelming who did not want to opt in to the adopting, allowing side-by-sides on the road. But if things have changed, then so be it.
And I think, I don't know if I heard it correctly, but there is a farm exemption for farmers to be able to utilize theirs on the road going from property to property. So that's still there. This would just entail people recreationally to be driving them on the road.
I think some farmers were worried that that was gonna be implemented and there, these random people were gonna be driving their side-by-sides on their farms, you know, and they'd have to be policing that. So I mean, that was one thing that was voiced at that meeting.
Judge, since the CAECO conference was mentioned, point of parliamentary procedure privilege, did you maintain your winning streak at the CAECO conference?
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Not once.
Twice.
Twice.
It's actuarially impossible.
She is standing there saying, "I want to win and I, I want to win and I..." She'd already won. "I want to win."
Three.
And they call her name and she won.
Three. She promises them a lot.
It was awesome.
All right. Anything else for Attorney Harry?
No, sir. No, ma'am.
Okay. Kind of exciting news, the bike park construction company will mobilize their equipment on December 15th, which means that's kind of an exciting thing for that area.
Santa's bringing Paula Bike Park.
All right. Yes. The groundbreaking ceremony, please check your calendars, 1 o'clock on January 12th. I think there's a little cruelty in that, groundbreaking, January 12th, but we're gonna try.
You never know. You never know.
Yeah, you never know.
Is that for the bike park?
Yes. Yes. And I will be sending out invitations, but just pencil it in so you don't have something else. It's the day before fiscal court. Yes. Working with the ethics still to bring that ordinance back to you, we're working with Junction City and Parable on an inter-local agreement and Parable has asked the Ethics Commission to present the suggested changes to their council so they're aware of what's being proposed. So that's in process and continues to be in process. I met with the Animal Control last Friday about getting the spaying neuter program back, get that going because we have money to spend on spaying some of these community cats. It was kind of exciting to listen to the ballgame Friday night, I have to say. That was, that was exciting and go Reynolds. And that was such a win. Fred Kane, magistrate Ellis, the structural engineer has determined that the roof is, is good. We don't need any additional support.
Excellent.
So that is, that just gets us one step closer. And the Public Safety Building, the next meeting is, is it next week? Is it next week? Is the 11th at 10:30? 12:11. Yeah. Yeah. All right. Thank you. Shannon, you have anything extra? Okay, I'll close this out. Okay, so Thanksgiving holiday is this week. We'll be closed, courthouse will be closed on the 27th and 28th, which is Thursday and Friday. As been mentioned about all the different parades, the Public Works Department has worked on and is building and will have finished by tomorrow, a float for the county to use. So anybody, any magistrate or any department head that wants to come and ride on the float, it is going to be really neat. So you need to come see it. First opportunity for that is in Parable on the 29th at 6 o'clock, be at Parable Elementary, no later than 5:30. Jamie's mentioned the Danville Parade. December 10th is the VFW City-County Lunch out at the showroom for all city and county employees. December 13th, Ms. Paul's mentioned Junction City Parade, again with the float. December the 18th is the courthouse Christmas lunch from 11:00 to 1:30 and that will be out at the showroom as well for all courthouse employees, county and state. And I believe that's all I have as far as calendar events. I just want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. There's nothing more important than family. And if you can spend time with family this week during the Thanksgiving holiday and just share good times and stories and laughs and make good memories with your family, then you know, that's, that's what we need to do, is to be with our families. Yes, magistrate Cullen.
Did you mention that the convenience centers will also be closed on Thursday and Friday or is that just the courthouse? Do we know?
It's convenience centers as well.
Okay.
Yeah.
So they'll be back open on Saturday?
Saturday. Saturday. Yeah. All right. If there's nothing else, I ask for a motion to adjourn.
Make that motion.
Magistrate Cullen, second. Magistrate Sleeper. All those in favor, signify the saying aye. Any opposed nay? Motion carries. We're adjourned.
All right.
Thank you, I'm for being.